Well, I saw this old dog was chasing this rabbit. I saw a dog was chasing this rabbit. I saw a dog was chasing this rabbit. It's on Sunday about noon. I said to the rabbit, you're gonna make it? I said to the rabbit, are you gonna make it? I said to the rabbit, you're gonna make it? The rabbit said, well, I got to. Well, a woman's heart's a sacred thing. A woman's heart's a sacred thing. A woman's heart's a sacred thing. So what's a man to do? Try a little tenderness, so does Reading said. Try a little tenderness, that's what he said. Try a little tenderness, so does Sid. And then he said, I got to, got to. Good God, watch my work.
Two.
Austin City Council District One. In 2017, they said the Women's March was the largest public demonstration ever in the history of Austin. That was held on a beautiful day in late January. I don't know if there are official numbers yet. This weekend had to give that event a run for its money. On a blazing hot day in June, in the middle of a global pandemic, people sweating their faces off behind masks and bandanas, sent us a message loud and clear. There were people of all ages. But I don't have to tell you this. Look at the photos. It's mostly young people, and they're telling us they don't want to inherit the same broken systems we did. We didn't create these problems we have, but there's no reason we have to pass them along. Racism exists in this city. Segregation exists in this city. Unequal health outcomes, access to food, education disparities, police brutality. All those things exist right here in this city. And enough is enough. From a policy perspective, these are not problems that can be fixed overnight. But the backlog is so big, we can kick this journey off with a flurry of activity. My colleagues and I are bringing a number of actions before council this Thursday. Multiple people reminded us last Thursday that our budget is a moral document that reflects our common priorities. I, for one, don't feel that overfunding a militarized police force while neighborhoods don't have sidewalks, families sit in the shadow of the digital divide, is something our community wants. My resolution, item number 97, will begin to address that. And while we're fighting to truly expand justice, we can't forget about housing justice. Item number 96 is something my office has been working on really hard for months, and I'm proud to finally bring it forward. Housing a human, housing rather, is a human need. And shame on us if we neglect to use whatever powers we have to ensure that opportunities are within the reach for all of our residents. This resolution will give formerly incarcerated people and people with eviction histories a fighting chance to live in housing they can afford in our city. There's no reason we should allow property owners who receive city funding for their developments to discriminate against people because of a mistake they may have made in their past. I want to be clear. That resolution, these resolutions rather, we are bringing them, and they only represent the first steps down a really long road of difficult policy work. But we're not going to fix this with policy alone. We need everyone in this community to look within themselves and confront your basic premises. Question your attitude. Think about your privileges. We have the opportunity here to set a nationwide example and demonstrate that this one tiny slave-trading town on the Colorado can overcome its racist history. We have the opportunity to turn to Austin and be a beacon of accountability, safety, and true justice. Thank you for your time this morning. With that, I'm going to hand it off to the mayor and, I'm sorry, we'll hand it off to Mayor Pro Tem Delia Garza.
Thank you, Councilmember Harper-Madison, for your leadership on many of these issues. I'm so grateful to have you on the dais with us. So we have seen report after report, study after study, all showing us that systemic racism and its devastating consequences are pervasive in our city. These reports and studies are important. They serve a purpose, but they don't matter unless we act to change the problems they reveal. The four of us on the Judiciary Committee have been compelled to move studies to action for the past couple of years, but we are compelled even more now. Our Black and Brown communities deserve it. Our city needs it, and this moment in history demands it. I'm proud to join with my colleagues to bring action to the June 11th council agenda. We have reports that clearly show that Black and Latinx drivers in our community are overpoliced compared to white Austinites. We have studies that show that Black and Latinx people are more likely to be subject to the use of force by police and that that force is more severe. Item 50 says that those facts are unacceptable, and it's time to do whatever it takes to change them. First, we're setting some clear goals. Those goals are zero racial disparities in traffic stops, zero racial disparities in arrests and tickets from traffic stops, zero use of force incidents, and zero officer-involved deaths. If these goals sound audacious and unachievable, we need to stop and consider what goals we would consider acceptable. How much racial disparity in policing should we be comfortable with? How many deaths at the hands of police officers are we okay with? My answer is, and I know your answer is too, is zero. These goals of how we hold ourselves accountable and the reforms proposed in my colleagues' resolutions are how we achieve them. Reforms are the beginning of the process, not the end. Progress towards these goals will be considered in the performance reviews of city staff directly responsible for implementing those policies and in all of the relevant budget decisions we make going forward. We're not asking for a lengthy evaluation process because we need action now, and we already have the tools to achieve it. These goals are framed using our strategic direction, a tool we have been using for two years now, and they build on the analysis that staff have already done significant work on. While this resolution focuses on long-term accountability for the immediate reforms we need in policing, racial justice is more than just policing. We want to recreate this model of accountability across the city with baseline analysis and goals related to every policy area from health outcomes to housing to economic mobility and beyond. I want to thank my colleagues on this call because I know they are committed, they're as committed to equity and racial justice as I am. And now I'll pass it to Councilmember Kassar.
Good morning, and thank you to my colleagues for your really hard work on this. We had such powerful testimony this week, such powerful demonstrations in our city for days, and it's clearly the moment for us as elected officials to do our part and to respond. And so, so we're bringing forward this package of important items that should be the beginning of a response, but certainly not even close to the end. You know that there's so much more work to do, but immediate action is what we heard the community calling for. And so I've sponsored one of the items that bans chokeholds, like the chokehold that was used to murder George Floyd, the chokehold that took the life of Eric Garner. The item also bans the use of tear gas and impact munitions on people just exercising their First Amendment rights, the kinds of things that hurt and nearly killed people like Bradley Vai Ayala and Justin Howell. The item also bans shooting at people who are fleeing, like Mike Ramos. But we know that those bans are critical, but are only as good as the accountability that we put in place and only as good as our vision for how we actually also make things better. And so that's why it's so important that we have oversight that is considered in Councilmember Flanagan's resolution and Councilmember Harper-Madison's resolution and the goals set forward in the Mayor Pro Tem's action. Because as we divert major funding away from simply policing our problems, we need to continue to work on how it is that we build new structures and put some of that funding into actually addressing the core issues in our community. Because if we don't want a society, you know, when I talk to my constituents in an area where we have more property crime and more violent crime than many other parts of the city, the goal shouldn't just be when you call 911, how quickly can someone get to you? But also, how can we create a city where you don't have to call 911 as often? Where people are more safe on the front end, where we're actually addressing people's issues? Where if somebody has an issue with addiction, our only solution shouldn't be, and our primary solution shouldn't be just putting someone in jail, but actually, how do we treat that addiction? When somebody has a mental health challenge, how can we not respond to it just with guns, but actually respond to it with care and addressing underlying mental health issues? And so coming up, I think what we are bringing forward is both the protections that our community needs, the change that people, the gaining that change that people were calling for in their testimony, and how do we come out on the other side of this as a more just city and a more fair city and a place that is safer for everyone, no matter the color of your skin or where it is you've come from? And so I appreciate so much that we are setting goals for the future while taking immediate action to change the policing tactics that we have seen in our city, the policing that led to the death of Mike Ramos, the policing that led to so many innocent people being harmed at the demonstrations, and that we're building hope moving forward. And that's what I felt so powerfully at the demonstration yesterday. I also feel a lot of hope based on the support we've seen from council just on the message board since we posted these items on Friday. You already, if you go check the council message board, already see that a large majority of council has already talked about their support, which I think is really powerful. If you go on there right now, you can see posts from Councilmember Kitchen, Councilmember Ellis, Councilmember Poole, and I'm sure others will chime in. And so I hope that we, as a body, come together in unanimous support of transforming what safety looks like in this city and meeting the demands that we are hearing from the community and across the country right now. So thank you all so much.
I want to, I don't even know where to begin. I don't have prepared remarks for this press conference. I've been so overwhelmed by the protests this weekend. I marched in the LGBTQ March for Black Lives on Friday and was honored by those organizers and the organizers of a different protest in asking, in their request for me to speak. I marched this weekend on Sunday in what Councilmember Harper-Madison so eloquently described. We have big work to do. We have big work to do. As Chair of the Judicial Committee, it has been my honor to work with my colleagues on initiating the types of reforms and completing the types of reforms that had never been seen before in this city. The item that I am the sponsor of converts the Judicial Committee into a more broader Public Safety Committee, and I am honored by my colleagues' continued trust in my chairing that committee. As Councilmember Kassar said, there's a lot of work and oversight to be done. This committee is not about a blue-ribbon process to figure out what we need, but in a council-manager form of government, the council I have come to appreciate has to continually work with the staff to ensure that the resolutions that we pass are implemented in the way that we wish. We are not, we are not closing our eyes to that part of the challenge. This will be frustrating. It will be frustrating. There will be compromises. And y'all, we have barely begun to talk about the state laws that make this job so difficult for the city, but we will. And we're going to do all the things we gotta do in as many ways as we can. Because when I talk to my constituents in far northwest Austin in District Six, where, you know, we have our fair share of property crime, well, we don't have our fair share of violent crime, and we definitely don't have our fair share of Black people. And when I talk to my constituents about policing, they ask for more police to address their concerns because that is the only option they've ever been given to address their concerns. There are better options. And I am hopeful that this week, in this moment, with the marches and the cries and the anguish and the anger that I share, that we will vote unanimously on these items as a council and send a message to the community that while this work will be hard and frustrating and the compromises are inevitable, that in this moment, we are unified that the big structural work must be done. Thank you again to my colleagues for your trust in remaining as the Chair in this item. Mayor?
To be here with my colleagues present, and I agree with Councilmember Kassar that but for the rules that limit the number of us that can be in one place at the same time, there would be others of us here. You know, these past two weeks, we have witnessed generations of injustice and inequality at a boiling point here in Austin and around the country. Here, the community has expressed real clearly that we want fundamental and structural changes to institutions and systems in our city. A peaceful and prosperous future together is going to require truth and reconciliation and accountability, and we heal by plotting a just and equitable way forward together, and we each have a role to play. This movement, this moment, I believe, is the, is the point in time and the work of a lifetime. We must rise to this occasion and this time. It has taken our country an embarrassingly long time to get here. Austin is a special place that on so many levels is doing right things, yet we have a history of overt racism in our city, and we have yet to eradicate the vestiges that are the institutional racism found in our very foundation. We have a long way to go. Austin is poised, I believe, in every way to do what it takes to root out institutional racism in all aspects of our lives, including in our police system. You know, Austin is a progressive, caring, innovative, friendly, and supportive city, and we need a police force that in conduct and practice and spirit is part and parcel of that. We need a police force that supports and implements, shares and even champions the uniquely Austin culture to which we aspire, even as it works with demonstrations and protests. For example, we should aspire and act to realize an Austin policing model that does not make addressing poverty and mental health the responsibility of our police. We should be investing elsewhere in services and support that are better equipped to deal with and resolve these underlying issues. And most of the officers that I've spoken with agree with this as well. Real change is hard. It is uncomfortable and not without risk, but that's okay. We have to learn to lean into that discomfort in order to make real change. We have to get this right. Every challenge our city faces is complicated by race and inequity. We can't work on a more affordable Austin or transit or traffic or policing or homelessness or healthcare or access to capital or education or housing without confronting our systemic inequities. Until the color of a person's skin and their zip code is no longer a predictor of early death, we're going to be unable to make true progress on any other issue. We are tested in this moment as never before, but our efforts at this moment will shape the character of this city for generations to come. Justice pays dividends. This is an exciting time. I thank my colleagues for their work this week and for the resolutions they're bringing forward that I am honored to be able to support. I think this goes back to you then, Councilmember Harper-Madison.
I think so. And with that, I would just say, thank you, everybody, for your hard work. Thank you for your words. I think we all know the reality is that it's been an exhausting couple of days, and I'm happy that everybody was able to contribute. I think at this point, though, we're ready to go ahead and take some, some questions.
Hello, this is Austin Sanders with the Chronicle asking questions. So first, I want to ask about timeline.
And I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I can barely hear you. I don't know if you need to speak up or get closer to your mic or?
Yeah, okay. Hold on one second. Okay, that's better. Okay. Yeah, sorry. Austin Sanders with the Chronicle asking questions on the top of the press floor. My first question is about timeline of these resolutions. So if someone could kind of give an indication of when some of these policy changes, initiatives will actually be implemented? Because it seems like there's, you know, been an urgent call for changes to policing in Austin immediately. And so if someone could just kind of address that.
You know, there's a lot of items here, but my, my hope and expectation is that even for some of the things that would change policing tactics, even if it takes the chief some time and the city manager some time to implement these into our formal handbook, I think that if you have a council and the mayor voting, for example, to say, no more chokeholds, no more shooting at people fleeing, no more using tear gas on First Amendment demonstrations, I would hope and expect and would send the message that that, that that should be policy today. And then if we vote on it Thursday, it should be Practice Thursday. So it may take time for some of these things to be, for them to be incorporated into the manual, but they should go into effect immediately as it relates to Councilmember Harper-Madison's item. And I'll let her speak to it, but procedurally, the city of Austin is not, can't legally adopt our budget until later this year because the city manager has to go through his process by charter. And so, so we would be making those budget decisions during the budget, but this sends, this sets a strong expectation about what the council's priorities are, which is, let's stop investing so much in policing being the primary way of dealing with our problems, and instead, let's take some of that money, some of that really important money, and use it to, to support the community so we don't wind up in those problems in the first place. Ellie or Jimmy, I don't know about timelines related to yours, and sorry, Natasha, that I just jumped in on my articles, but I think that.
Well, and then I would add, you know, there's, there's a lot of conversation on social media about what different cities are doing and how that reflects on what Austin should be doing. And, you know, the, I encourage folks to read the full articles and, you know, I think every reporter in the press conference knows, you know, the challenges of headlines versus content. All cities are stuck in a bureaucracy that takes, I mean, at least a couple of months to get big stuff done, if not a few more months than that. And when I've seen headlines about budget cuts in LA or things being said in Minneapolis, you know, they very quickly turn into, oh, they voted to do it, or, oh, they cut money when, but when you dig into the details, it's actually like, oh, they just readjusted what was a proposal, or they, they signed a vow, but they didn't actually vote in the meeting. Like, all cities are going to be stuck in this conflict with their state laws and their charters about how these processes move forward. That's what I meant when I said this will be frustrating. We, we, we are moving as quickly as, as you can in, in a bureaucracy the size of the city and a bureaucracy the size of a police department, but we are not, we are not waiting to see, to, to rise to this moment and making it very clear the work we intend to do over the next two months.
Hopefully, I'm not cutting anybody off. So yeah, I'll echo a lot of that. And I'll also say, you know, just as a reminder, this is a marathon. It is not a sprint. This is just the start. I think I've made it pretty clear in my message board post that in no way do these resolutions get at the root of the system, the parts of the system that we need to fix. I feel like we are working really, really hard to overthrow generational systemic and institutional racism, and that, that's going to take us some time, I think. I, well, I don't think, I would like to encourage my constituents, the folks in Austin, residents throughout the city, that continue to use your voice, continue to use practices that are placing this healthy institutional pressure at City Hall, but don't forget to also apply it at the state level and our legislature. And I think, you know, my colleague said it best, you know, when, this will be frustrating. It will take time.
Okay, so our next question is from Claire McInerney at KUT. She asked, some of you expressed disappointment in Chief Manley last week during your meeting. Are you asking Spencer Cronk to demote Manley away from Chief of Police? And if you could explain what power council, council or the mayor has to fire or demote the Chief of Police?
If you want, I can answer the legal part or Mayor Pro Tem, it looks like you're lit up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I believe the charter says council cannot interfere with personnel decisions by the city manager. So that, those are our legal limitations. We can express our opinion of, as many of us have, but we cannot, we're, we are prohibited from interfering in personnel decisions.
And I would add, you know, the, the city manager's job is different than the city council's job. And it's, it's, it's our job to reflect the will of the community and to set the direction. But, you know, the manager has, has a lot of challenges when it comes to logistics and, and legal requirements and other things. And I still believe that Spencer is going to do the right thing. I have also made it clear to him how I feel if he doesn't.
And for, and for all the reporters, you know, you could go and check the city charter at Chapter Nine, Interference in Personnel Matters, if you, because it's probably better for you to quote from the charter rather than from council members on that, on that point, because it's just right there.
And if I may, what I would add there is to recognize that we're basically asking our manager to heed the concerns and recommendations of the community and our constituents regarding Chief Manley's future with the Austin Police Department. At the end of the day, that's who we should be listening to.
Okay, thank you. The, the next question's from Bridget Spencer at Fox Seven. She asks, in addition to citizens, will council be taking input from police officers in this effort to create police reform?
I, I have already started those conversations. I, I have already started those conversations and I have from officers who share the frustration and have expressed the same concerns that we're hearing from the community. But they also found themselves in a, in a culture and in a structure that has made it difficult for them to find a path to express it. The, the path forward here works better if it's in partnership with, with, with everyone. Not just one part of the community, but with everyone. And if we're, if we're eager and honest about wanting to address these issues and willingness to take on the big structural changes that, that will help us get there, then, then we should welcome the partnership of officers that are willing to do that work. I, I spoke to many officers during the protests this weekend and expressed that, that same desire that when, when they do their jobs well, we can engage in a partnership. And many officers, at least this weekend, did their jobs well. And I think that's at least a step in the right direction.
Okay, uh, next question is from Mari Salasar at KVIEW asking, "One of the sponsored items includes eliminating funding for militarized equipment like tear gas and rubber bullets. APD said they were forced to use those things to control crowds of protesters climbing I-35. If that happens again, what kind of crowd control methods should be considered if they can't use tear gas slash less lethal ammunition?"
Having to take that on, you know, what, what we have, look at what we saw yesterday. What we saw yesterday and what we've seen many other days is that the best way to make sure everyone is safe is to make sure that nobody is escalating on any side. And when we really uphold and protect people's ability to, to demonstrate and to exercise their First Amendment rights, then, then you have, I think, create a place where everybody can be safe. What we saw last weekend and what people testified about was totally unacceptable. It was not that, we heard testimony not from people that were endangering someone getting hit in, by impact munitions. We saw and heard from so many people who were being hurt or saw people getting hurt just because they were exercising their First Amendment rights. And so it is not, it is not right for us to be using tear gas or using these impact munitions against people who are posing no threat to anyone. And in fact, what we saw was the escalation by our own police department hitting people who weren't doing anything wrong. Then also escalated actions from people in the protests. And in the end, what we saw was there were injuries of police officers, which is not a good thing, which is a bad thing. And then we saw really serious injuries of protesters, including people winding up in the hospital. And so that's what we need to avoid. We can have marches and protests where folks don't get hurt. And that's what we are, are moving forward with is saying these so-called less-than-lethal munitions being used against protesters actually lead to more people getting hurt.
Um, thank you, Greg. For just a moment, I want to make certain that we're being, that, well, representation matters. Ellie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but Mayor Protema, if you would like to add anything, I, I feel like you haven't had an opportunity to field some of the questions.
Thanks, Councilmember. I think the, the larger question of what, what else do we do if you can't do that is, is the exact conversation that we want to have right now is re, rethinking about how we respond to situations like that. And so that, you know, to the question of, do we involve the police department in conversation? We involve everybody because it's going to take everybody coming together to have these conversations. What, what we need to know, what, what are the, what are the alternatives? Because the response, when you turn on your television and it looks like you are, you are witnessing a, a war in, in your own city, there's got to be other, other ways to, to do crowd control. And I, and I know that that, that there's solutions out there. But we can't start to have, we can't even have that conversation if, if the, you know, the thinking is, these are the only things that can be used. This is the only way. You know, we've seen these conversations happen with healthcare for all or with the fight for 15. People were told, no way, there's no way that we can do $15 an hour. It's not going to happen. And so I just, it, it's a, it's a broader question of starting to have those real conversations and understanding what the options are. Because it cannot be that the only option is to tear gas and shoot protesters. There's got to be other options. And I think that we are wanting to take the bold step to say, let's figure out what those other options are.
I could just give a postscript to that because I think what the Mayor Protema just said is, is how I feel as well. You know, in the protest that we just saw, the vast overwhelming majority of people participating wanted to exercise their First Amendment rights in a, in a peaceful way, recognizing that sometimes in protests and demonstrations, that that can also be a disruptive way, but in a peaceful way. And yes, there were a small number of people whose goal was to, to incite and participate in acts of violence. I think that, that one of the things that you saw in the difference between the, the events a week ago and, and the events this past week is that those agitators did not get a, a, a same leg that they, that they had the first week. And I think that when, when our, when our police or our crowd control measures are looking at that, you have to recognize that, 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 that the police compete with these agitators for the loyalty of the protesters. So the conduct that we have has to be such that we, we, we win that, 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 that competition. And to the degree that, that we are acting in a respectful and protective and supportive way, it changes the, the, the feel for, for demonstration or protest. And I think that we need to focus on, on those kinds of, of things in order to make sure that we can have big protests of angry and frustrated people that are also acting disruptively, recognizing that there will always be that other element that comes in. How do we manage that in a way that looks and feels like our city?
If I can add anything to that, I'd say, in my mind's eye, the, one of, right? Again, one, one of the answers would be the first action being that we reach out and that our peace officers reach out in a way that's humane and civil to work towards amicable solutions for allowing peaceful protest.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Our next question is from Betty Cross at KI. She asks, "The Austin Justice Coalition is asking the city council to pledge to support the AJC proposal to defund the police department and start that process by reducing APD funding by $100 million in the next budget cycle. How many of you are willing to make that pledge?"
I'm willing to pledge and it's, it's, you know, I think it's great that we have, that so many new people are listening and engaged and, and, and part of this conversation. Because the reality is, we, we've almost had this conversation every single budget. Every single budget, we've been looking for ways. My very first budget as a council member, we were able, it was, it was a historic move of, I believe it was $6.5 million to public health. An increase in $6.5 million because previous councils had tried to make sure that we were staying in line with investing in our public health. And I have said, I'd probably 50-plus times in my five, going on six years on council, things like when we are sending million-dollar fire trucks to medical calls because we failed the people and didn't provide them healthcare. I've been saying that since the first year that I was elected. And so it's, it's, you know, it's, it, we're having these conversations that many of us, and I would say especially those of us who represent marginalized communities and Black and Brown communities, we have been pushing to change the funding, adding funding for health equity contracts and social services. The RISE Fund, another example of recognizing that money needed to be diverted to the bucket to get people help the most that needed help the most. And so I have been on board since my first year on this council to, to put money where we can really have an impact. And I'm glad to see that so many in our community are wanting to join us in, in an effort to, 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 to allocate money in a way that we are being responsible and actually addressing many of the inequities in our community.
I don't want me to add too much, but I stand with what the Mayor Protema has said. You know, we, and diverting money, major dollars from simply policing problems in, back into the community is a way to make us more safe. You know, we, we have talked about in past budgets, moving dollars away from just hiring new patrol officers over into things like giving people protection and shelter from family violence. Because just having another patrol car driving up and down the street does not prevent the, the biggest chunk of our violent crime in the city, which happens in the home. We need to talk about treating homelessness with housing, not just with jail. We need to talk about treating addiction with treatment, not just sending people to jail. And, and I think we need to be talking about that in a really big way. It is well past time for Austin to live up to our progressive branding of inclusion and solidarity. And this is, this is a really important moment for us to step up in that.
If I may add my piece, I'll, I'll definitely echo what my colleagues have already said. But I will say this, I don't believe I speak for myself when I say that $400 million for a city of Austin's size is a large amount when compared to other cities. When we rank it, we rank among the highest. And I believe a thorough assessment of every single solitary line item in the budget and an analysis of the true cost to the city, I think that would help us to determine a number that would be less or even more than the proposed $100 million. So I, I look forward to that analysis.
I will say that there, there's a lot of stuff that is in the police budget that doesn't have to be in the police budget. Not because it doesn't have to happen, but it doesn't have to be police. Once we start digging into this and we look at the, the money spent on militarized equipment, the, the money spent on responding to medical or mental health calls, the, the money spent on patrol in a way that, as we have come to, to realize, isn't actually patrol because it's responding, they're, they're not actually patrolling. They're responding to mental health calls or they're responding to domestic violence calls that in large part might, might be better served with a social worker. Or they're responding to a whole host of things. Or in the case when I did the ride-along that I did, sat in Central Brooklyn for four hours during a shift just to book one person who had been picked up for DWI. When we start digging into what, what, what all of these line items mean, we will likely find more than $100 million. Not that, that, that we are going to just blindly take these actions. But there's, when we, when I talk about big structural change, and I'll just say in my words, when I talk about big structural change, I'm talking about changing the way we do business in this city that results in better outcomes. Not just better outcomes for Black people in this moment, for Black and Brown people generally, generally, but better outcomes for everybody. Better outcomes for everybody. And when I talk to the folks who have more traditionally, let's say, taken a pro-police stance, if you want to put it that way, and I explain the types of the concepts, like, you know, why, why not fund more Neighborhood Watch out of the Neighborhood Housing Department, for example? Why does it got to be police? And in fact, we don't fund Neighborhood Watch right now. Those advocates start to, to see that there are, there aren't just different ways of doing things. There are better ways of doing things. And my instinct is that it will be more than $100 million of, of improvement that we're going to be able to find.
I guess because everybody else has spoken on this issue, I'll append on it as well. There, it, it is clear, I think, from, from the budget debates that I've been in for, for many years and certainly with what's happening in this moment, that there's a desire for us to, to create the opportunity for real systemic and institutional. And I think that the, the resolution that asks for a budget to, to be presented to council in August, recommend, recognizing that, as, as, as Councilmember Kassar said, our charter mandates that the actual budget decisions are made at that point. But having a budget in front of us that, that, that provides that roadmap and shows us what that means and how that's done is a, is a real important next step if we're going to actually achieve real systemic change.
Uh, okay. All right. Sorry. I didn't know if it froze, but I guess you all are done. Thanks for answering that, everyone. The next question is from Kevin Clark at KXAN. He asks, "How does a reduction in police officers contrast with the findings of the Matrix report from 2016, which recommended an increase in frontline officers and civilians to build up community policing? How do council members reflect on the efforts, time, and money spent to implement the Matrix recommendations, which until very recently were very much a part of the city's plans?"
Um, I'll just start by saying that report was based on how we police now. It was based on a very, you know, specific assumptions that, that we say we want to change. Assumptions like we will respond and, and things that we have already changed since then. We've changed, we've added funding for mental health response. So when somebody calls 911, it's, do you need police, fire, EMS, or mental health? That report was based on doing things the old way, the status quo way, doing things where we're sent, as, as Councilmember Flanagan touched on, where we're sending police officers that, yes, they have, they get mental health training, but they are not mental health professionals. And so I think it's, it shows that the many ways we have tried to understand the issue and how we tackle it and how we respond to community asks. But we are in a different moment now. And as, as representatives of this community who have, I have never received the, the amount of emails, I don't, I don't think in my inbox. I mean, we would, we're receiving four to five a minute from Austinites. This is a different moment. There is a large call for change, institutional change to move from the status quo. The Matrix report is based on the status quo. And we have heard overwhelmingly to rethink the way we police and to rethink the way we handle situations like mental health. And I, and, and that is what, that's, that's the difference here. We're rethinking the way we respond to different kinds of needs and emergencies in our community. And that report was based on. and emergencies in our community. And that report was based on the status quo.
Greg, you want to go?
If we continue to rely on police officers to be the city's primary response to virtually all of our challenges, then, then you would need to continue to add to that. But the question is, can we start to respond to challenges differently, with something other than just policing? So I think that, and I, I think that's generally what, what I think many, many of us believe needs to, to shift, as the Mayor Protem said. I also want to add just one thing for, for the press. I don't think that this would be, the, the city council has not voted to say ever to the city manager that the staffing plan put forward by the police chief or by the Matrix study is the right plan. If you go and look at what the council has done, we, we received that report, we voted and said, we understand that this is the report. But there's been an ongoing conversation inside City Hall about whether or not that's the right path, right? And, and one way to have police officers have more time was to say, let's stop booking so many people for low-level marijuana or stop taking so many people to jail for having a suspended driver's license. And so there's been a conversation ever since the Matrix study came out about whether or not we want to continue that status quo. And I think what we're hearing from the community is they don't want to see that status quo.
And just as a specific example, the, you know, during a pandemic, a day is a year and a year is a day. So I can't keep track of any timelines in my mind. But I remember reading the Matrix report, I think pretty close to the beginning of my service on the council. And I pulled in Chief Manley into my office to talk about it because while there's, there's a lot of meat in the Matrix report, one thing that really stood out to me was the concept of community service officers, the CSOs. And I had a long conversation with the chief then, and it might've been 2017, y'all, I can't even remember the years, about, did those CSOs have to be in the police department? Could we find other departments or other ways to create that, that effort or that, that group? And there was not a lot of creativity from the chief in that moment. But again, this was a long time ago, and I may be misremembering that conversation's details. But even then, even in the Matrix report, you can't just read one conclusion. What we're, what we're talking about is not inconsistent with the Matrix report. If you just open your mind to the notion that the jobs that need to be done in this community could be done by more types of people, then you're not actually in, inconsistent.
All right, I'll move on to the next question. This is from Phil Jankowski at The Statesman. He notes that Councilmember Harper Madison's resolution specifically states that there is no confidence that, that police department leadership can or will implement culture change required to end the disproportionate impact of police violence against minorities. Given that, how do you expect the police department to implement what is dictated in these resolutions?
I appreciate the question, but I'll say this, we have to be honest. We have to be brave enough to acknowledge that this is a decades-old issue. And we can't expect an overnight change. That would be lofty, to say the least. I think those of us who have been in this fight for a while, we already realize we still have a long way to go. But letting up is not an option. Our children, our futures depend on our ability to persist. So while I don't necessarily expect an overnight change, I 100% will not stop fighting until we see change. The Austin Police Department should be disappointed that that the council and our constituents have lost considerable faith in their ability to end police violence against peaceful protesters and against non-white communities. I mean, what we expect from our public servants is for them to do their jobs and for them to serve the public with integrity. It's precisely that lack of faith that will, in my mind's eye, lead to action. And them taking action on their own that will bring us forward into the future. I, I think this statement simply underscores the reasoning.
Okay, guys, thank you so much, Austin, for your questions. We're going to go ahead and, and the questions right now. What I'm going to do is open it up to the floor. Does anybody want to have any closing remarks before we leave?
Just want to thank everybody for their time, their effort. The amount of emails is actually probably very closely, again, to the amount of phone calls we're receiving. And something I wanted to be clear about pointing out is I've gotten a lot of phone calls from rank-and-file law enforcement professionals who said, "Thank you." And I told them, "Thank you. We both have hard jobs." And I just want to make sure to remind the general public, both of those things are allowed to be true at the same time.
Anybody have anything else to add? Okay, with no further comments, I'd like to-
I just, I just want to really thank Councilmember Harper Madison for, her leadership throughout all of this. I think the whole council has stepped up and that there's important, it's really important for us to all respond, but I, in particular, just really want to lift that up for the, for the press and everyone watching.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, so much for being here. We're going to go ahead and end this news conference.
Thank you.